Word of equalization, special meeting to order. I'll call the roll. Mr. Brent Town.
Here.
Yes, Eleanor Thompson.
Here.
And it looks like I'm here. Okay. So we got full board. There are two properties before the board today. The first one is BOE number four. And the owner is Alex Trahan. Did I say that right?
Trahan.
Trahan?
Yeah.
And you're Alex?
Yes.
You just want to come sit up here?
Alexandra.
Yeah, only if I'm in trouble.
Okay, we're pretty much informal here.
Cool.
We're going to hear from you first, tell us what you want us to hear about your property. Then we'll hear from the assessor. Then you have a chance to respond to what he says.
Okay.
And then Friday, we will decide what the value of, we decide what the market value is.
Sure.
And just so you know, the statutes require us to accept the assessor's value unless sufficient evidence is presented to overcome that presumption.
Sure.
All right. So your property is at twenty-eight seventeen?
Yes, Morgan Trail.
Morgan Trail?
Mm-hmm.
In Edmund.
Yes. We purchased it the end of August twenty-twenty-two. We had the appraisal done that hit exactly at our purchase price, which was maybe a few weeks before closing. I also provided that in the documents when I submitted the request for this. So I was a little surprised to see it, it's a six point two eight percent increase in our value of our home in four months. I actually did work for the Tulsa County. I was a residential appraiser for Tulsa County for a couple of years. I actually never made it to, we didn't do the hearings in front of the board. So this is a new part for me. But all of the behind the scenes stuff, I was actually going out and, you know, using comp sales. So I'm very familiar with the process.
Okay.
So I was just pretty surprised that our sales price wasn't applied. I mean, all of these comps that are provided by the assessors are from twenty-twenty-two, which is when our sale occurred. It's a valid sale, it's a willing seller, willing buyer. We never met the people that we bought it from. To me, that should, along with the appraisal, that hit exactly at the purchase price, that to me is the fair market value of that home.
Okay. And what do you say in that fair market value is?
The purchase price of two hundred fifteen thousand.
Two fifteen?
Correct. Which is also stated as the value of that home in the appraisal that we got.
Right.
All of these comps are remodeled, every single one of them. Ours is probably the last time it was remodeled, remodeled was probably in the early nineties. We don't really have, we have one functioning bathroom. All of the fixtures are outdated, like, we have a lot of work to do on the home, which is why it was priced at the two fifteen. We've done no improvements since move-in, it has stayed exactly the same. Even one of these comps is at two hundred and sixteen thousand. So I'm a little confused as to why my two fifteen purchase price is out of sync with the market when we're seeing a sale of basically the exact same value happening that we're saying is in support of increasing it by six percent on my side, which just, I guess.
Are you referring to your, the?
These are his comps, yes ma'am. So I guess, when I was looking, there really hasn't been a ton of sales activity since our purchase. A few, again, every single house that's selling is completely updated. Ours is just not. We have quite a bit of work to do on ours. And I would say, you know, that's the difference in what the assessor is trying to put as that value, which would be accurate if we improved upon the home. Then I would think it would sit at that value. But for right now, I just think that appraisal plus the purchase price of between a, you know, willing seller, willing buyer, I find it hard to argue that when we're sitting at a two fifteen purchase price and there's a comp sale for two sixteen, I'm just a bit confused as to why we can justify a six percent plus increase in four months when it seems that we're in line with the market.
Let me ask, if you, what was the asking price for the house?
Two fifteen.
So you paid the asking price?
Yes, ma'am.
And then coincidentally, your appraisal was the same?
Yes, ma'am.
What is the closest major intersection for this neighborhood?
It's like Second and Santa Fe.
Okay.
Here's the map of the property, here's the property, and then here's Santa Fe and West Edmund Road.
Okay.
And just our little, in that little neighborhood when I'm searching, there just really aren't even that many sales that have occurred, like, maybe ten since ours. And so I just, I feel like that.
But before January one?
Sure, sure.
No, I'm just asking.
Yes, yes, ma'am. I think I only saw maybe three posted as sold since January one.
Okay.
And I don't disagree that the market value upon improving the home, it would sit at the recommended assessor's value. Until those improvements are made, I just don't agree with that.
What's the name of that neighborhood?
Trails.
Trail, Thompson Trail?
Trail South.
Trail South. I'm just making up words.
Okay. Are you living in the house?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, there were nine offers on the home. We just happened to be the first ones to see it, first ones to put in an offer, and they took the first one. So it's, you know, I feel like if that wasn't a fair market value, that wouldn't have been accepted at the time.
Okay, anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay, we'll hear from the assessor.
So yes, there was a valid purchase in August of twenty-two for two fifteen. We currently have the value on at two twenty-eight five. The average age of the comps that we polled are thirty-eight point six seven years old, and we have the subject property at forty years old. Thirty-eight point six seven, if you want to get technical, the average. So if there have been any improvements made on the comps that we used, and there may have, but we don't have any recollection of that. But everything that we have polled, and that she alluded to, that our sales come up to show a median of nearly two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. And that's why we did not go back down to the purchase price because the comps that we polled, all twenty-two valid arms-length transaction sales, show that we have her in the right value amount.
Okay, what about what the taxpayer says that this, this house needs renovation? And has not been done?
Right, now we, this was not made aware to of us, you know, prior to this. And so this is new information that has been given to us. So none of that was provided to us during the hearing, the initial part.
Oh.
I disagree with that, but.
You're saying you presented disinformation to the?
I definitely explained to you that the comps that you were suggesting were all updated and ours were not.
Just out of curiosity, how do you know those other ones were updated?
I just looked on Zillow, and you can see all the pictures or updated interiors. Yeah, I looked, I actually looked up all of these and then any recent sales I could find from the past year. And I truly couldn't find anything in our neighborhood that isn't updated and recently sold except for ours. So it is kind of a unique, we really got lucky in landing this one, which I know that. And being able to get in the house and have the chance to make the improvements ourselves.
It wasn't an as-is sale, was it?
It, I mean, it, I'm not sure, I guess technically was it as-is?
They didn't make it.
Yeah, I think every, every.
I mean, I think that, I would assume that's kind of how it was presented, was they didn't do any improvements for us.
Okay.
But this is all the information that was given to us for the hearing. Anything that is given to us, we will scan in. But all we had was the call report and of what we did. And apologize for going too fast and just kind of showing you everything that we've got. And just the explanation and all that, that's all we received in the initial hearing, so.
What was the appraisal of this in twenty-one? Do you have that value?
Oh, you want the actual value as a twenty-one?
Yeah.
Okay, so the twenty-one value we have is a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
And twenty-two?
Twenty-two, January first, we had it at two hundred thousand.
Okay.
The previous owners had a lot of, like, senior frees and things on that that prevented it from, we anticipated an increase to our purchase price, but over, we did not anticipate.
Previous owner had a freeze on them?
Yes, yes, so it was, I mean, they had very low taxes.
Okay.
That wouldn't affect their valuation though, right? They would just affect their taxes.
Sure, but I do, I think it at some point can impact how, I mean, it slows the increase of that market value over time.
And then when you have a sale is where everything resets.
And the cap is off, yeah. So I understand the move to, when a sale happens, take advantage of the fact that yearly cap isn't there, you can bump that price. If it's not a valid sale, I would understand that. I think that we have a lot going for us in that there are sales prices within thousands of ours within the same year. And we have the appraisal that sits at our exact purchase price.
Just out of curiosity, in your opinion, if, if you still did nothing in a year from now, so January of twenty twenty-four, would your opinions be that you should still be at the two hundred and fifteen sales price?
No, ma'am, I think it would go at the annual increase that is already in the statute. I think that's how it just naturally over time gets up to, you know, it matches the market.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Anything else?
Nothing but me.
Assessor?
Good.
Okay. All right.
Thank you so much for your time.
You bet. I'm going to close the hearing on BOE number four.
A letter will go out over the weekend, you should hear from us Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
Real quick, on the, on the next one you have, you need to add another, an extra six in there. It's one nine four six 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 zero one three for the account number. There was a number missing on the.
And what number will we have missing?
Six.
There should be an extra six in there.
At the end?
At the end with those sixes, so three sixes in a row.
Oh, okay. Okay, Mr. Raymond Modicet? Is that right?
Yeah, I pronounced it Modicet, close enough.
Modicet?
Modicet, ma'am.
Okay. Well, we get that right. All right, you heard probably what went on before we're coming in for a little here. We will hear what you want to tell us about this property, and then we'll hear from the assessor. And then you have an opportunity to respond to what the assessor. And then we'll, we'll make a decision Friday. And as Eleanor pointed out, we have, the letter will go out Friday on what our decision was. All right. This is a property at one two one two nine zero Max Lane in Choptown?
One two one two oh. Twelve one twenty.
One two oh?
One two one two zero.
One two one two zero.
Okay, there's no nine on that.
Okay, yeah.
All right, where is Max Lane there in Choptown?
Close to fifteenth and Anderson, if you're familiar with the area.
Here's a map right here.
I'm real familiar with the area. Oh, Max Lane, okay.
The gentleman developed that little area back there, his name was McLean. He couldn't name it McLean, so he, he got as close as he could, Max Lane.
Max Lane, again. Okay, yeah, the developers usually want to name it after, you know, themselves or their family. Okay. One two one two zero. Max Lane. All right. Are you right on fifteenth?
No, sir, I'm actually right off Max.
Okay.
There's a little street back.
Oh, yeah, 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 I got you.
About a half mile north of fifteenth.
Okay. All right. Tell us what you want us to know about.
Okay, my name is Raymond Modicet. I'm appealing the county assessor's value of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the property at twelve one twenty Max Lane. I believe the correct value should be two hundred thousand for the following reasons. My parents built this house in nineteen ninety-four. My mother lived there until two thousand twenty-one, when she died at the age of ninety-three. The houses had no improvement since it was built. I've included six photos, three of the outside and three of the inside, showing that I think the property needs improvements. The carpets are old, urine stain, urine feces stains. The wallpaper, paint, and the popcorn ceilings are all original and kind of dirty and faded. Of course, you can't see that from the, from the outside, I understand that. Woodwork's old and unclean. The water well's original, the heat and air system is original. It needs to be replaced. I estimate it would cost fifty thousand to bring it, the property up to a marketable standard. As a trustee for my mother's estate, I estimate the house to be worth two hundred thousand dollars at this time. Zillow estimates the market value at two forty-six, two hundred and forty-six thousand, if the property were in reasonable condition and ready to sell. Zillow listed four nearby houses as comparative properties ranging from a hundred and eighty-five thousand to two hundred and thirty-five thousand. However, these houses are reasonably, in reasonable condition and on the market. As a trustee for my mother's estate, I asked Jane Willard, a local Realtor, to appraise the property back in September of twenty twenty-one. He thought he might be able to sell it for two hundred thousand to two hundred and forty thousand as-is. And he attached some CMAs to reflect the sale price of similar properties. I don't really understand CMAs, but I attached them with the information I sent you. So I assume he knows what he's talking about. I also attached a sheet comparing the two houses adjacent to twelve one twenty Max Lane. One is at twelve one sixteen and the other at twelve one forty-four. The houses on either side are, they're both larger in square footage and at least similar in lot size. But my mother's house was built twenty-nine years ago, and these two, one of them was built three years ago and the other nine years ago, I think. The property located at twelve one twenty Max Lane needs a lot of work to bring it up to marketable standard. Therefore, I believe the correct value at this time is two hundred thousand. And I've attached the three photos of the outside, three photos of the inside, three pages of the Zillow information, the information from the Realtor. And then I made a little comparison sheet of the three adjacent properties. The way I look at it is, I've got new houses on either side of it. And this one in the middle, it's not very good. So it's like I've got new shoes on either side, no wore-out tennis shoe in the middle. And so that's, that's, that's my case.
Okay.
What's the square footage of your house? Is it eighteen hundred, was it?
Two thousand six square feet.
Two thousand six?
Yes.
Yeah, that comparison sheet shows the square footage of all three.
And the lot size?
Most of them are an acre. Let me get to my little sheet here.
One acre.
Okay. Lot size of that one is one acre. Square footage, two thousand six foot, built in nineteen ninety-four.
So has the house been empty since your mom passed?
Yes, it's tangled up in court right now.
In a probate?
Not really a probate. My mother had a trust, but my brother violated that, and so we're in the middle of a court case with it. I, I'll give you the number if you want the court case.
So what are the plans for the house?
Well, hopefully we'll get this settled and we can renovate it and sell it. But it's been tied up since the fall of twenty-one. So I don't, I don't know. But in the, in the trust, in the trust, it said, do not do anything with the house until it's settled. So I, I've been unable to do anything with it.
Okay, and the gentleman that you spoke with, the Realtor, but he didn't do the formal appraisal. He just told you in his opinion if he got it listed, what he would sell it for. Okay.
Correct. And that was back in twenty-one, I think the market value was higher back then because it's harder to sell stuff now because the interest rates went up. I was selling some property and the gentleman I was going to sell it to said, since the price of materials went up, he couldn't build what he thought he was going to do. So that sale didn't go through.
Is the court case a dispute over who owns the house?
No, it's, my brother and I were co-trustees. And after my mother, ten days after my mother died, he filed a lawsuit. And he took all, he took the property out of the trust, and he took all the funds out of the bank account. And so the court case right now is to get all that put back into the trust, the money and the property. So it can be properly, profit, so I can do what my mother asked me to do, be a trustee.
Legally, who owns the property right now?
Legally? That's a hard question. It should be in the Modicet grant or trust. But since my brother quitclaimed it out of that, he quitclaimed it into his name and my name. Now, we have, we have a hearing on the twenty-first with Judge My. And we have asked her to put that property, to vacate those deeds, to put the property back in the trust where it belongs. So I don't know how to answer.
But are you and he the only beneficiaries of the trust?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's a technical matter, it's going to belong to the two of you?
I'm asking him he be removed as trustee.
Well, removing him as trustee and removing him as a beneficiary are two completely different, okay.
So like legally, right now, it's not in the trust, you're here representing the trust?
It's confusing for me.
So.
I, I, I don't know.
We might actually have kind of an ownership issue at this point.
But the value's going to be the same no matter who.
Right.
That was the question that is burned into my head.
Well, who got, who got the notice for the taxes this year? As trustee?
Just as, my name is first on the quitclaim, the ear of the deeds.
Okay. So is there a standing issue in this for the trust? Are you representing yourself or the trust today?
No, I, I mean, I will, I think I will eventually.
You will what?
I will, I will eventually be the sole trustee.
Right.
But you're not right now.
I'm not right now.
Is it within the purvey of, and then maybe I'm talking about something we might be, need to talk about on third, Friday, but the purvey to, to suspend this until the court case is done, or does it have to be decided this week?
I don't know that it matters who owns it, the value's going to be the value.
Right.
It's either occupied, being rented, or, or just sitting there. And so I, to me, I don't think we need to delay, think the value will get set.
Okay.
And if, if you would like to come out and look at the inside and go through it, you're welcome to, I'll show you, you can, you can come look at it. It's, it needs improvement, but I couldn't sell it like it is. There's the, there's the court case, it's coming up. We have a hearing on the twenty-first.
Okay, yeah, it's, ownership is probably a misnomer. It's who's the taxpayer, that is the question here.
I haven't paid the taxes on it for last year or this year yet because I'm awaiting the outcome of this dispute.
Okay. County assessor, who's the taxpayer?
Whoever the name is on the deed, and right now we've got Raymond and Ricky Modicet.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
If that, if that clears it up for you.
Unsolicited, unsolicited, he even advised, don't lose it in the taxes.
I hope you get it resolved this year.
You got anything else you want to tell?
Do you have any more questions for me?
I'm good. But we got to hear from the assessor.
Yeah, we got to hear from the assessor here.
So a lot of the information that was brought upon us was after the hearing, a lot of the newer information submitted to us. But I do want to point out that even though we are talking about fair market value, because that's what, you know, we think the value is worth right now, it was an invalid transaction from the previous owner, it stayed in the family. But because it has stayed in the family, they're getting the benefit of this amount is what it's truly worth to them right now with paying in taxes, is a hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars. So the cap came off from the previous owner because it's now under them. So the senior frees and the homestead came off for the time being. But they're getting the benefit of still only paying this right here, that's what their amount is based on property taxes right now. But the three twenty-five is what we believe the fair market value is. It was at three twenty-nine, we lowered it a little bit. They did submit some information afterwards about some comps that they believe used. And we looked at those, and those comps support a value of three hundred and, it supports a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar value, but those are all twenty-one sales. And that's a, that's all based on their valid arms-length transaction sales. And they're all within range of where his property is. Now, we use twenty-two sales to support our value. So we're using stuff that is also within range of his. So we, we went ahead and still looked at some of the information that he provided just to further our research on this, but he did provide twenty-one valid sales. We're going off of twenty-two valid arms sales. And I also want to point out that the, the average age of his comps are twenty-nine point five seven years old, and he's twenty-nine years old. And that's kind of where I feel that we're at right now. So I feel that we do support our current value based on the comparables that we've run.
Okay. Looking at the previous value information, two thousand twenty-two, you were at two hundred and seventy-two thousand five?
Correct.
And then within a year, you're at three hundred and twenty-five?
That is correct, three hundred and twenty-nine originally, and then lowered to three twenty-five after the informal.
And that's just based on the comps?
That is based on the comparables, because we're also looking at what the market trend is doing. And if you want to see a list of the comps that we've used, and I'll show you the map here in a second of where everything is at. and I'll show you the map here in a second of where everything is at, but we're using homes that are in similar in square footage, and if we need to make adjustments to get it as close to the subject property, then we can do that as well. But these are the values based on adjustments and time trend as of January first of twenty-three. And then if you want to look at the, uh, am I going too fast for you? Okay, and then, here's the subject property right here, and then here's all the comparables within close range.
Am I right that that's a, year over year is a seventeen percent increase?
Correct.
Okay. That's a lot of that because of just the, some of those caps came off, or?
As far as what, um, and it could be, uh, for the sub, for the comparable properties, but, I mean, for just the market the last couple of years, that's, that's a huge thing. So we have to account for market trend after the actual sale date. All right, I believe we are accurate as to what his current value is based on the data presented.
Anything else?
That's all I've got.
Response?
Uh, yeah. What can I say? I think I know what it's worth, and I'm the one who has to sell it, if you would like to buy it for your estimated price, I'd, I'd love it, but I don't think it's worth it.
Anything else for you?
No.
All right. I'm going to close the hearing on BOE number eight. And that's the last one on our agenda. So, is there any, uh, comments from the board?
No, just to remind you that we'll make a decision Friday and you'll, you'll get it next week.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, sure.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so.
Thank you, sir, that was very good presentation. Okay, any citizens?
Can we go to the schedule for next week?
Yes, so, uh, as of now, we are, we'll have our decision meeting for today, of course, this Friday at ten. Um, next week, we're currently slated for Monday and Tuesday, thirteenth and the fourteenth. I think we're going to have about three each day approximately. But I think the thirteenth agenda has already been published, the fourteenth I'll probably get published today. We'll have decision day on the seventeenth. Uh, we are also going to have a meeting on the twentieth, which is the next Monday as of now, and then of course, that Friday for decision day. Uh, we might have the twenty-first too, but as of now, I only have one scheduled for the twentieth of that week.
How's that big packet going?
Oh, the big one, I was going to say, I still haven't received that from y'all, so what's, what's the update on that? That group of one hundred?
They haven't said anything to us, oh, I'm surprised. But they're about to send the two hundred and fifty this week.
Okay.
For the second one. They say a hundred and something for the first two areas, they're sending two fifty for the next two.
Is it appropriate to ask where these houses are generally located?
That's everywhere, in Oklahoma County. To me, I mean, I was, I was trying to be smart about this, there, there, some of them, like this last set, some of them were.
I think we can technically say where they are, but they'll, you'll find out whenever they appeal.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we had to wait for an official.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Anything else for anybody?
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All of the favor.
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Garrett, if you want to go ahead and exit out of my thing?
Sure.
Thanks.